Please rise. Join Councilman Williams in leading our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer.
Tonight, I bring a special prayer. It's an old classic prayer, and it's relevant. Let us pray. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love; for it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen.
The Peace Prayer of St. Francis.
Thank you. And I would say, Pastor, if all of your prayers are special. I opened our Guthrie City Council meeting on June 4th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. And we have one public comment from Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, would you come to the podium, please? We have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Identify yourself and that you are a citizen of Guthrie.
Yes. My name is William Murphy. I reside at 3208 West Noble here in Guthrie. Over the last seven years I have been at that address, there has been seven people die within one half mile of my property. I once come up here and pointed my finger at the Capitol. Has anybody ever talked to the families from this? No, I don't think you have. So now we've had seven people die. I have continually complained to ODOT. ODOT keeps telling me the same thing. Without proof there's a problem, they're not going to do a thing. Every one of you can call them after I come up here and stand here and point my finger at you. They're not going to do nothing. The law has to be enforced. The speed limit has to be enforced. And I took that directly to our chief. And it ain't just on Wednesdays and Fridays when we have cattle trucks going to do it. It's all day long. The Sheriff's Department came out twice. One of our council members were there, and he personally watched that deputy write ticket after ticket, one after the other. He started sitting behind the City of Guthrie sign. Then he was just being blatant out in the road. Officer Illinois from our police department. He was watching them blow by him coming into town. Some of them were over 60. It's common for them to come into town at 55-plus miles an hour. Nobody wants to do a thing. ODOT will not ever do one thing until they have proved that it's happening. Our city limits does not stop at the church or the Dollar General. It's all the way out to our hospital, where our fire department has to turn and take their ambulances in. Where our city workers turn north and south to get into our city yard. It's treacherous. I've complained. Now I'm not going to stop. I'm going to, this is going to get something done about it. The first round of getting something done is the investment. It costs the chief money to write tickets. There's no good investment in that. Because after they write the ticket, then they got to fill out a report. That's where it gets expensive. So we got to figure out how to make his budget, adapt to, and solve this problem. We just acquired money for a ballpark. Has anyone contacted ODOT about that ballpark and the amount of people that come out of there? Come see me, because I'll give you one year's worth of video of what happens when they dump out onto that road. This needs to be addressed, period. If he says he ain't got the money, it's your job. He'll come and holler at me, because I will certainly be right back up here trying to get something done about it. Period. We need more patrol units everywhere in the city. We're having complaints of speeders. Let's give our chief a little bit of help. Show him where the city limits are. Send him to work. Law's on his side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. As I think all of us know, individuals speaking during the public segment, the council does not respond. We're just here for your input, and we certainly appreciate your input.
I understand.
All right. Thank you very much. Second item, or third item on our agenda is consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the city council minutes of May 21st. And B is the approval of payment to Oklahoma Home Centers for the amount of $58,890.95 for windows for the wastewater treatment and the GPWA administrative building as part of the CDBG window replacement project. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as identified any discussion. Submit your votes. Unanimous approval of those present then to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Fourth item on the agenda is items removed from consent agenda. There were none, so that is passed. Fifth item is a special presentation that we have. We are so very, very fortunate in our community to have wonderful representation at the state legislature, both in the Senate and the House of Representatives. And we have two of those individuals represent us here today wanting to make a presentation. So Representative Dool and Representative Talley. Whoops.
Your five minutes haven't started yet.
All right. That was for me, five minutes.
Would Chief Swagger come up here, please? We wrestle you for it, but we're not going to. He's going to read the presentation, the citation to you, but I would like to thank you personally for letting me bother you all the time.
I'm first person.
No, no. When things come across our desk at the Capitol and it deals with police, I need people, we need people that we trust that will tell us the truth of how it's going to affect all of Oklahoma. And so I appreciate you that we can bother you.
Good, because we do.
Well, like Representative Talley said, we wanted to present you with a citation because we just were made aware that you were named the 2024 Small Agency Chief of the Year for the State of Oklahoma. So if I'm going to go ahead and read, if I may, this is the citation. "Wary's Don Swagger has served with distinction as Guthrie's Chief of Police for nearly a decade and was recently named the 2024 Small Agency Chief of the Year by the Oklahoma Association of Chiefs of Police out of 381 departments across the state that serve a population of 15,000 or less. And Wary's Chief Swagger has distinguished himself in a commendable manner by discharging his duties honorably and professionally and holding not only himself but his entire department to a high standard of service, thereby earning the trust of Guthrie's citizens, which builds their confidence in their local government and proving to be a tremendous asset to Team Guthrie due to his genuine care for his community. And Wary's Chief Swagger's leadership has been marked by a strong sense of vision, a commitment to transparency, and a relentless pursuit of justice. And he has consistently demonstrated a deep understanding of the complex issues facing law enforcement today while working to develop innovative strategies to address them. And Wary's Chief Swagger was also recognized as the outgoing president of the Oklahoma Association of Chiefs of Police, a role in which he served with dedication and commitment. Now therefore, the Oklahoma Legislature sincerely thanks Chief Don Swagger for his exceptional service to the citizens of Guthrie and commends him for his level of professionalism that promotes a long-lasting and positive image of Oklahoma law enforcement." So we wanted to present you with this.
Do anything hanging out my teeth? Quit doing that. Quit moving.
Thank you. It was very unexpected.
Representative Talley, Representative Dool, thank you for, again, your support for the community for years and obviously for this special presentation.
He's a good kid.
Item number six, presentation by Blue J Executive Partners to discuss the potential use of the Blue J app to increase information flow between police officers and drivers. Chief, are you leading the discussion?
Do introductions.
Five minutes there, Lieutenant. I can't talk that long.
No, that doesn't pertain to you every day.
First thing I want to do is introduce Kurt Foster here. He's the creator, along with his son James, correction, Chris, and his cousin James, the creator of the Blue J app. And what it actually is, it is an information app that we can use as another tool in our belt, but it's going to also kind of bridge the gap between citizens and police officers having further knowledge before they step out of their car. And that's the basis that I'm aware of.
Before I get started, wanted to say that Representative Dool and actually Talley allowed me into their office to tell them about Blue J, so they are already aware about what I'm about to speak about. My name's Kurt Foster. I think I'm supposed to tell Aaron that I'm ready. There we go. Hello, my name is Kurt Foster, and I'm the CEO of Blue J. Blue J is a state-of-the-art technology designed to provide more information for the police officer and the driver during a routine traffic stop. Traffic stops are anything but routine. The Blue J profile will provide officers with humanizing information that will include your first language, occupation, health issues, mental health issues, disabilities, and if you are a veteran. Traffic stops, so if you have a loved one that might have hypertension, dementia, autism, speaks another language, or someone that struggles with a disability, by simply typing in your license tag, the Blue J profile will give the officer this information before they approach your vehicle. At the same time, the police officer will send you a humanizing profile with their name, badge number, police department, and the reason why you were pulled over, and also a humanizing picture of themselves so you can see the beautiful chief when you get pulled over. And 24 hours after the stop, you will receive five questions. These questions are taken straight from the police handbook, so we're not creating questions to criminalized police officers. It's just getting feedback. So these five questions are asking about the car side manner of the police officer. That information will be gathered in the Blue J office, where we will send the collected responses to the captains and lieutenants, so they can see how the citizens are rating their car side manner. Our Blue J technology is an award-winning app. We recently won two Addy Awards, two Gold Addy Awards, and one Bronze. We even have the support of Mr. Pennell, the great lieutenant governor from Oklahoma, who I believe is from around here. And here's a look at our established team. And I have one final quote from Guthrie's own Tracy Z. It will be free to all Guthrie citizens, so there would be no charge to anyone for downloading this app. So thank you all for your time. Thank you for thanking Blue J into the Guthrie community, and all we want to do is bring peace of mind to both police officers and the drivers during a routine traffic stop. Thank you.
Are you available for questions? How do you go, how are you going to go about getting that out there?
All right. So I've been working kind of quietly behind the scenes with a marketing company, but I've started to speak with the police officers. I've been speaking with like the athletic director. So we're going to go through a true campaign through Guthrie. And so I went to the commerce meeting, and they told me that Guthrie loves Facebook. So I have joined six of the top Guthrie Facebook pages, and we're going to advise the newspaper. So we're also going to try to make ourselves available at the local high school activities.
So I assume it's tied to the tag.
Correct. Yeah. So as soon as you get pulled over, they're typing your tag, and your profile will come up with all that humanizing information, along with the picture of yourself. And then at the same time, while the police officer is looking at your information, you're going to get a profile that will de-escalate the situation because it will have a humanizing picture of the police officer, their name, badge number, police department, and why you were pulled over. And then after that, five questions will come to you 24 hours later.
And he'll know because of the app whether you have it or not, because it'll bounce back.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I hope in doing that is, there's a police department in Virginia that has kind of the same technology as the five questions that we're implementing, so when they pull someone over, they'll give them a QR code and allow them to download the app from there so they can get those questions.
Obviously, it's voluntary to put that information into your system.
Absolutely.
And since there is some sensitive information there, when you talk about disabilities, for instance, mental health, I think you mentioned.
Right.
How do you ensure that that's secure?
Well, for one, the information is volunteered. So it's information that the driver wants you to have, but our two app developers have created a system where the information is not really on a cloud, it's on a server that would just be between the driver and also the police officer. So no one really has access, we're not giving anyone else access to that information, so it would be simply between the police officer and the driver, and no one else will have access to a cloud or anything to get to it.
Okay. And there is no charge for this at all?
No.
There's no charge to the police nor to the administration?
No. No. We believe, for one, for the community, we believe that citizens shouldn't have to pay for this type of protection. So we wanted to make sure that the information gets clear, that it doesn't cost them a dime. And with Guthrie being our first, and it's kind of a first for anything that we've done, we've partnered with them to, there's no charge for anything. And any upgrades that we also have in the future, there will be no charge for doing that either.
So how is?
You're the first. Right. And that's what we kind of call it. It's Oklahoma's first. We wanted to do Guthrie, you all, for several reasons. We wanted Guthrie because you're the first capital. We're the first to invent something like this anywhere, and it doesn't hurt that you guys are the Blue Jays.
So how is it monetized? Because typically, when things are free, the monetization comes from the information that's collected.
Yeah. We're all duty there, so we don't care about. We're going through legislation, so we didn't go through it this year because we're trying to talk to all the representatives and senators to kind of let them know about what we're doing. So when legislation comes around next year, we will then work that to get it written into bill. That's our hope, is to get our, to get our paid selves.
So you have case studies at that point?
Oh, we already have some case studies, but what we're going to do with Guthrie, it's real time. So that's why it's so critical. But we're going to go through legislation to get ourselves paid.
There you go. So there's the monetization. So what is the, what's the intent here? What do you see as the outcome that your company is trying to achieve?
This started for me about 2016. There were just several police shootings that had happened, and two happened back-to-back, just two days in a row. And it was two young men who looked a lot like my own kids. But I also have police officers who are real good friends of mine, so I'm not that guy who's going to go run and go say, hey, y'all police officers are this way, because I know they're not. And so I was in education for 32 years. That's what I did. But this hit me somehow, and it just, it became my mission to show that we have so, and when I found out, we have so many good police officers that are out there helping citizens, doing things to protect them, but no one knows about it. And so I also know that we have citizens who really want to know, you know, who's pulling them over. And one of the things we found out about the profile was that for women, we found out that they're terrified that it might be a fake police officer coming to their car. So the profile coming to their car gives, you know, gives them a sense of security that at least it's a real police officer coming to my vehicle. So for me, there were just a lot of things that just went into what we were calling the routine traffic stop, but we've seen where police officers are having to make decisions on a person having a diabetic episode, not knowing if it's intoxication, or someone who has dementia, that they're having to make a decision because they just don't know. So we're trying to give police officers as much information as possible about who we are. They're going to give us information about who they are, just so that the whole situation de-escalates. And we know that communication and information is just so critical in so many other things that we're doing. So this is what started it for me, was just putting more information in their hands so that they can make really good decisions when they approach our vehicle.
Well, and I imagine it makes the officer feel a little bit better, too. You got to be apprehensive every time you walk up to a car. At least you'd have a little bit of information about the person you're pulling over at that point, or more, maybe.
Especially for mental health and medical concerns, it will help us a lot. You know, I don't think anybody's real sure yet how many people are going to participate in this, but there's no real downside to it. And the biggest issue from my point of view is not so much us getting their information as them being able to access our information. Because, I mean, unless you're in trouble, you don't know who a lot of our police officers are. So we look at something like this that just, that just builds on making trust and transparency with our community that much stronger. You know, it's a lot easier to have conversations without conflict when you know who you're talking to. And when you don't know who you're talking to, things can get out of hand and get stupid sometimes. And we don't want that, they don't want that, the community doesn't want that, and the more information they're willing to write us, I think the better we can serve the community. And then being able to see exactly who we are interacting with them, I just don't think there's a downside to it.
And that's our true intent.
It doesn't ask us to do anything.
The push notification presentation. So while I'm driving, I'm going to get a notification on my phone when I should be looking at while I'm driving to tell me to pull over.
Well, one thing we hope is that it's going to go through car plate for most cars. So we're hoping that it just goes through your speakers, and your speakers tell you that you should pull over.
That's above my head. I drive a 30-year-old vehicle. However...
But we do have a system in place, what's going to be called Know Your Rights. And we're going to try to educate the drivers. We'll send out notifications like you're talking about that will tell drivers, I've been pulled over, they're offering me, they're giving me a citation, it's signing it and admitting some guilt. So we can answer a lot of questions. We'll work with the police department to get those questions that they want us to send to drivers, just so we can educate them. So if, if they get pulled over, they're more educated about how the whole steps work.
So when you get this push notification, the patrol cars behind you with the lights flashing.
Right.
And then that notification is going to tell you what you're being pulled over for?
Not during the first notification. So the first notification will just inform you that you're being pulled over.
So it's not automatic?
With updated self, if you're in for this or that.
You're going to discuss.
Right, right.
That's the second time you're pulled over. Yeah, that's coming.
But in a normal and a routine traffic stop, a police officer has already some access to... access to some information about that vehicle, correct? So, I mean, you already...
We do, the renter owner, insurance and stuff like that. The benefit of this is, is the additional information that these people are willing to share with us. And, and if you've never been out there with someone having like a diabetic emergency, sometimes it's like super hard to be able to tell the difference between that and a D-line. It just is. And people have gone to jail for diabetic emergencies when they should've gone to the hospital. Mental health issues, PTSD stuff, now there's so many veteran stuff, now there's so much stuff out there for veterans that we know, because a lot of times when we're dealing with veterans, their mindset can be different. And depending on how I ask the question, "Have you served?", some of them answer yes and some of them answer no based on their mindset. But if they've already put that in there and I know this guy or this gal's a veteran, then I already know that I can also reach over here and have access to so many more resources to be able to bring in to talk to them if something bad is gonna go wrong. If I don't know that, all these other resources that are reserved for veterans won't come in until I can tell them they are a veteran.
And some of the things that we're gonna do, we're going to create videos with our marketing company called Ghost. And one will specifically be about mental health, one will be about second languages. So it will tell the community of Guthrie why the profile is so important. So as he talked about with the health issues, we had already done one with someone that is a diabetic. And what he said is exactly what she said. And she said there are times when her insulin will give off the scent of alcohol. So a police officer who sees you driving suspiciously, you get pulled over, he smells what he thinks is alcohol, it could lead to someone going to jail when they should be getting medical care. But if they don't know, they, they can't find out how to help you.
And this program, I mean, it solves 100% of that. But if we can, if we can prevent anybody from going to jail who doesn't need to go to jail, that's a benefit. I mean, that is just a benefit. We don't wanna put people in jail that don't belong there.
I find it hard to think that somebody with a mental issue is going to put down, "I have a mental issue."
Well, and that's, and that's it. You know, they haven't done it before, they've got their research into it, and, and I have, you know, I'm a little bit skeptical, but they're assuring me that...
I mean, that'd be good to know as an officer that this person has...
Well, also to go through, to answer your question, I know that we just passed a state bill where they were asking to have the autism sticker put on the driver's license. So if, if they're willing to put their sticker on a driver's license, they're definitely gonna be willing to say that they have autism when they get pulled over. And I've spoken with another representative, he's the biggest heckler out there, JJ Humphrey.
You didn't have to mention names.
Okay, well... But his son has autism. So as much of a heckler and a guy who puts on this show, when he started talking about his son, you could see the dad come out of him, of being concerned about his son who has autism. And maybe his information and the way he communicates with the police officer might get taken as, you know, sarcasm or some kid who's just acting a certain way. So a lot of times, you're going to find more people than not. And we also know that there are going to be daughters of elderly parents who are going to fill it out for them because they want their parents, if they get pulled over for police officers to know that they might have some illness or some disability. So you're going to have a, a bigger family effort in filling out those profiles and enforcing them. But we've gotta do our job in making sure they understand how important the profile is to fill out.
Chief, I mentioned that you already have a data source that you, that you're looking at, your police officers are looking at already, and now potentially adding a second. Is there concern that there's just, in the timing of looking at all of this information at, at a routine traffic stop?
I don't think so. How, how we really see it set up is, you know, you pull the car over, you make the stop. When we come back, I mean, it is, it's gonna take the officer either calling in the tag to get the, the state return stuff, and then the officer punching in the tag number. But, I mean, they're back there, they're, they're punching all these buttons anyway. It's not like they're gonna punch exactly, not more than seven extra digits and hit enter to get this information back. If they had, you know, if it was a full name, date of birth, all that stuff, we don't have time for that. And it's only gonna make the driver, the operator, a lot more mad because we're keeping them that much longer inside the road. This is set up to be fast and simple.
Any questions from the council?
What do you need from us for something like this to happen?
Well, we're not voting on it.
I'm not, I'm not posing anything, I'm asking a question.
Okay, this is just informational.
I'm asking, what do we need to, you know...
I don't think we'd ever have to do anything.
Well, if you all know, what I would really appreciate is if you all could just pinpoint me to maybe certain people I should talk to, or pinpoint me to certain organizations that I should be speaking with, so that I, I, you know, I'm now attending the chamber of commerce meetings, you know, trying to get my name out there and what we're doing. But you guys know who we probably also need to speak with. And I spent two hours with the athletic director and talked to him about how important his program is going to be for us to get the information out there. But if you all know of people that, you know, we need to make sure you speak with. And so like Tracy Z, I mean, she's been instrumental, you guys, in helping us with this project and along with Hedy Coleman. So, you know, we've got some things in the city, but we know that there are so many other people that we should be speaking with. So that's the way you all can really help us, is to make sure that we're speaking to the right people.
I know, we felt the first step, talking to the right people was talking to all.
I like your idea, I think it, I think it sounds great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Foster, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item number seven, revocable encroachment permit agreement with Guthrie Brewing Company concerning property at 110 West Harrison Avenue. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As indicated, as a lot of you probably know, the Guthrie Brewing Company is redoing a building on West Harrison there, right across from Cinnonola Restaurant. And during the process, they were looking to, or they were having to place their condensing units. Because the building is built to property line, front, back, side, traditionally, the condensing units go in the rear. Obviously, they don't have any of their own property. So one of the things that I brought up was an encroachment permit. The city has used these in the past. It's probably been about 20 years since the last one has been done. But it would obviously allow them to put it in the back, encroach in our right-of-way in that legally. And also, it would, like we've done in the past, others that can encroach the... So with that, that's essentially what the agreement is, is putting forth is the ability to encroach in that right-of-way. They only need four feet to meet their needs. This went through legal as well as our Public Works to ensure that it wasn't gonna impact any utilities or any access. And because of the slight bit of encroachment, none of that will be impacted. So we'd be looking for the council to approve the agreement. The owner is here, if you have any questions for him.
Will they put an E? Like bury yourself, somebody won't come forward.
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna, I would, we're probably talk to him about that as maybe putting some ballards, because even Public Works had mentioned the same thing for protection on both sides. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Dan, or the owner who's here, want to?
Sounds pretty civil today.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Entertained a motion, then?
So moved?
No, I'm sorry. Tracy, you, you move?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
How about three?
See the votes. Yeah, approval then from those present to approve the encroachment, encroachment permit for approximately four feet at 110 West Harrison Avenue. Item number eight, city manager report.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We are working actively, we're working actively on the budget at this time, and we have begun the first round of negotiations with the FOP. As we're working on this budget, we're watching our sales tax collections very closely. As we've talked throughout the year, we did, we've, we've had a roller coaster. So it's, we've had a high month, we've had a really low period of time, which spanned about four months. And then May's collections, we were up 9%. So talk about trouble to forecast. You know, it's, it's up and down and, and down and then up. So we're watching that closely. Overall, we are still down 2.1% for the year, which comes out to about $121,000. So we have a budget deficit at this point of $121,000. We're gonna watch the next two months pretty closely. That'll get us through the end of the third quarter, which hopefully, if we continue the trend of, of being higher rather than lower, we can come out flush, if not ahead of what the budget projections were. So that is ongoing. The department heads' first budget deadline is June 21st. Just a reminder, your city council retreat will be held on Tuesday, June 18th at Meridian Technology Center. We will have several things going on that day for you. In addition to the city council retreat, the airport board will also be having their own retreat on Tuesday, June 11th. So similar topics of discussion. Most of the discussion at the airport board will be CIP-related. So thanks to Congresswoman Stephanie Bice and that $6 million allocation we have received for the terminal, we now have to replan our capital improvement plan. So instead of taking five years to accumulate the funds to build a new terminal, we now have some funds that we need to reallocate between now and fiscal year '30, both federal and state dollars, so. June's Red Brick Nights, we had over the last weekend, impressive turnout. I think we had a fantastic turnout, had a couple of food trucks cancel last minute, which overwhelmed the food trucks that were there, one of which actually sold out, so that's good. We, we love to get that message out to the community and the folks who are coming out. The employee appreciation lunch held at Banner, thank you, guys. A few of you made it out to the, to Banner Park for that event. We do appreciate you for that, as well as FN Bank for sponsoring that event. We are also working actively on the CIP projects, as have been approved, both with the financing and the cash that was allocated. And then lastly, again, I want to congratulate Chief Don Swager and emphasize, you know, having a good team and having team, good team members who are excelling in their roles gets us lots of good recognition. And Chief Don Swager deserves all of those congratulations. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Eddie. Item number nine, comments from members of the city council. Councilman Bathory?
Don, very proud of you. Proud of all our chiefs and all our staff, actually. Great job. You deserve it. That's it for me.
Councilman Case?
I suckle what Brian just said, Don, I'm really impressed. I'm really, really impressed, dude. You've, you've really done Guthrie proud.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, I would like to see the Guthrie Brewing Company strive to make up that sales difference. But, you know, it's, I know you've put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of work, unexpectedly, in that we've talked about that business, and I just commend you for sticking it out and going the distance. And hopefully, you build it and they will come. So I think you're doing a great job at that process.
Councilman Taylor?
Chief, once again, congratulations. And I don't know what else you can say on the deal, like, that's, it's outstanding. Tracy's right, I, I've noticed Guthrie's beginning to get more and more businesses in, and I think, you know, it's, it's, staff's doing a great job on it. I appreciate all you guys, what y'all doing on that. I think that's fantastic. So Guthrie is moving forward, that's the main thing.
Councilor Rob?
Yeah, just to second everybody else, thank you. There's nobody I appreciate more than somebody that comes and invests with us, so thank you very much. Don, it feels like you, you get an award like every six days, so congrats again, and...
He's a good one, that's why.
Yeah, so congratulations again. So, and that's all I have.
I've got a couple of things. We, we have a number of vacancies, or coming, anticipated vacancies, I should say, in some of our boards and commissions. And it's an opportunity for citizens to get directly involved in the direction that this community's going, getting direct input, getting an opportunity to, to really make a difference. So just to, just to mention these, and you can go to the city Guthrie website and look up under the boards and commissions, and it will tell you exactly what these boards and commissions do, how often they meet, that kind of thing. But boards of adjustment, which is very important, deals with variations, if you will, variances, doesn't, doesn't meet very often, thank goodness, actually. But when they, when they do meet, the issue that they meet on is very, very important. And we have two vacancies existing, and we've got two pending, I think, terminate, not termination, but their terms are, are running out, their terms expiring. So potential three or four opportunities there in, in that board of adjustment. The library advisory board has a term expiration, one vacancy there. Our parks and, and forestry has two vacancies and one, again, termination, that's, that's not termination, but term expiration, expiring. I won't get it. And, and again, really important in our, in, in our community, what, what the parks department does, what forestry does for, you know, all of our trees and so forth. So really important there. So consider that, consider getting more involved. Application process is pretty simple, again, it's right in the website. And so get, get involved. We mentioned Red Brick Nights, also, we've got at the shops on Fridays, I believe, we've got activities going on with the downtown market and the jazz and music venues that go along with that on Friday, days and nights. And so a good opportunity, again, to visit downtown and, and to support those entrepreneurial individuals that are just getting started in their businesses at the shops. So good, good opportunity there. And, Don, congratulations. With that being the last item on our agenda, we are adjourned to city council, and I open our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of June 4th. Second item on the agenda is our consent agenda A and B. A is the approval of the Public Works Authority minutes of May 21st, and B is the approval of payment to Myers Engineering invoice number 222246-14 for $22,999.84 for the water main replacement project. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as identified.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, questions? Submit your vote.
How about three?
See the votes. Now it's approval to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three is items removed from the consent agenda, of which there were none. Item number four, task force, task order number 164 to Myers Engineering, Tenny?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Task order number 164 will cover the following page, phases of our water tower rehab projects for our east side elevated storage tank and our west side elevated storage tanks. This task order will cover the study and report phase, the preliminary design phase, final design phase, the bidding and negotiation phase, and construction phase. Total amount of the task order is $70,500.
Now, will this include the, I know the two older tanks, will this include the one out by Bex and the one at Job Corps, or are they separate?
No, sir, this will include the west side storage tank and the east side storage tank, our two oldest water storage tanks.
I just wondered if you were including them or just, I didn't think they needed any work done to...
Not at this time.
And that 70,000 plus is, is the estimate, or do we think that's pretty much it?
That will be the total amount of the task order.
That will be the total amount, max?
Yes.
At that amount, okay? Any other questions, comments by council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any last-minute questions?
Mayor, I'd like to add a point of clarification. That $70,000 is just for the engineering and contract phase, that is not the maintenance on these, on these tanks. So, that, that's still to be bid out and will be funded via the CIP projects.
This is the preliminary engineering work?
Yep, yep, so this will be getting all the bid documents ready to go out, get it bid out, and then the contract administration through the, through the projects.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no other questions? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, Trent.
See the votes. And it's approval then to approve task order 164 for $70,500 to Myers Engineering. Uh, with that being the last item on our agenda, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.